Okay, it looks like we're live. Well, welcome, everybody. My name is Chad Davis. I'm with Dove Audiovisual, and thank you for coming to the 2021 Talmadge City Council Candidates' Forum. It's an honor to be here, and I'd like to thank our superintendent, Steve Wood, for allowing us to have this event here, and of course, all the staff. We had several people involved with IT Department, the AV Department, helping us get ready for tonight. And I want to thank my technician, John, who's backstage, Mr. Middleton, not Mr. Bolus, and he's our video director tonight. And of course, we want to thank Mia for coming back and hosting another event. Thank you, Mia.[32.61][32.61](APPLAUSE). And then, of course, we want to thank all of you for coming, and thank you for all of those that are watching online. We recognize that we had over 1,000 people watch the School Board Candidates' Forum, so we know that a lot of you will be watching online, and we thank you for viewing in. And feel free to send your questions into the chat on Vimeo. This is only on Vimeo tonight. We'll be posting it again if there's any technical glitches, but we do have good connection tonight, so. And with that, we want to thank the candidates for coming. Thank you, guys, very much for all agreeing to do this. We're sorry that Mr. Donovan had a last-minute engagement and couldn't be here, but thank you, guys, for coming.[65.61][65.61](APPLAUSE). And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hearst.
Thanks, Chad. It is an honor to be a part of this event, and I'm looking forward to getting to know our city council members and candidates. Talmadge residents are currently voting to fill all three-at-large council seats. Three Republicans, Jonathan Bolas, current Ward III Councilman member, Adam Bozick, Talmadge resident and only candidate not currently serving on our city council, Dennis Lowry, currently at-large council member, and three Democrats, Christopher Graham, current at-large councilman member, Carol Silicon Kilaway, current Ward IV Councilwoman, member and president of council, and James Donovan, current at-large councilman member. Unfortunately, Mr. Donovan had a last-minute work commitment at the funeral home and sends his regards. Now, a little housekeeping. We're asking each of the candidates to be brief and concise, answering each question in approximately one minute. Their seats have been selected randomly. The first question will start with the first person on the left, then question two beginning with the second person, and so on. And with that being said, let's dive right into the first question. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for city council.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Carol Cicliano-Kilaway, and I'm running for Talmadge City Council at large. Just a little bit about myself, I was born and raised here in Talmadge. I've lived in Talmadge my whole life. Married my husband 31 years ago, Tom, he's in the audience today. I have three great kids, and I help my family run their business here in Talmadge. We have Circle Mold and Machine, which is a mold manufacturer, and we manufacture molds for the rubber industry, and we ship all over North America and Mexico. So we've been very fortunate for the last 55 years to be in business. Some of my civic involvement is I've been the treasurer of the Treehouse Preschool. I've also been the treasurer, secretary, and vice president of Talmadge United Soccer Club, Tri-County Kent Hockey. I was a team manager, and I also helped my husband with the equipment. I was the treasurer for the Great Lakes Freeze, which is another hockey club, and I volunteer at St. Matthew Parish Schools, where my kids were going to school there, and I'm also a Eucharistic minister at St. Matthews. I've been on council for the last 10 years, president of council for the last four years, and I believe I've done an excellent job representing the fourth ward, and I really want to just serve the whole city.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Bolus. I'm the current Ward III Councilman. Lived in Talmadge close to 10 years. Married into Talmadge initially from the New Franklin area. My father was the first mayor of New Franklin. I've always had a passion for getting involved in the community. A little about myself, again, like I said, married into Talmadge. My wife's family owns Delta Asphalt Company, so they have a company here in Talmadge. My daughter is five years old. She currently enrolled in kindergarten in Talmadge Elementary. My one-year-old son, he's busy running around at home, but we're just really excited to be here. I'm really excited to get involved in the community. Really, I ran as a Republican in Ward III. I'm the guy you might have heard, one by one vote, survived two recounts, one in Summit County, one in Portage County. It was difficult to get my name out there. You know, it was really just grassroots, going door-to-door. I introduced myself. You know, I ran on transparency and community service, and I'm just really happy to be on council, representing the people, and again, just trying to give back and be your voice. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Bozick. I am currently not on city council, but I am running for council at large. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Talmadge. I've lived in Talmadge for pretty much my whole life. I married my high school sweetheart. We both own businesses here in Talmadge. Harmonized Studios, which is a music, private music lesson studio, and I own a commercial cleaning company. We wanted our businesses based in Talmadge. We could have went elsewhere, but we wanted them to be here in Talmadge. We have three children. We have a 14-year-old freshman, and a 10-year-old, and a seven-year-old. I've also served in the United States Military, in the United States Marine Corps, for five years active duty. I've also been a youth sports coach for multiple different sports here in the community, and I'm also American Heart Association First Aid CPR instructor, and I've done a lot of different community events with that here in the city.
Well, thank you, and let me take a moment to thank you for putting this program on. It's very important that the people of Talmadge have a chance to see their candidates for office, not just a piece of literature on the door, but actually see their faces. My name is Christopher Graham, and I am married to my wife Diane, who we've been together for, married for 43 years. We have two daughters, seven grandchildren. My political career began, actually, when I was 14, I started knocking doors with my father in Ackman Ward 10. Kind of got hooked in the politics thing back then, and I've been kind of hooked on it ever since. I served as a councilman at large when we moved to Talmadge. I served four years as a councilman at large, and at that time, we still under the state statute, and I ran for president of council, which is a separate individual seat. I ran for that and served as the president of council for four years. At that time, Mayor Wozinski, who had been one of the fine mayor for the city, decided to retire, and I ran for mayor, in which I served for 14-plus years. After that, I left and went to the Stowe Municipal Court to become the chief deputy of the Stowe Municipal Court. Not the smartest thing I ever did, and after that, I kind of retired. I have been serving for the last eight or 10 years as the president of the Talmadge Historical Society, and last fall, I was offered the opportunity to come back to council and serve as a councilman at large, which I thoroughly enjoy, and now I am up for election this November. Thank you.
Thank you for hosting. This is nice, and it is important. Appreciate it. So I'm Dennis Lowry. I am number six or number five here this evening. My wife Pam and I have been married for 43 years, and we moved to Talmadge in 1985. We have lived in four different homes and in three different wards. That's given us a very unique perspective of the city. I got involved civically. I was a football coach for 30 years. That led to me being on council the first time with Chris and Mayor Klein in 1994 to 1998. Then, after that, I had the pleasure of serving on the Civil Service Commission, the Talmadge Public School Board. Then Mayor Klein asked me to work for him as the Director of Public Service, and then later as the Director of Economic Development. I left the city then and decided that I wanted to stay involved and ran for council again, and so I am finishing my eighth year on council. Both our sons live in town. We have five grandsons. My wife Pam runs a private family foundation that's located in Talmadge. She's been very involved civically in her own right and professionally. I'm the Director of Business Development for FMD Architects.
Thank you. Commonly, city council roles are appropriations for the annual budget, the construction of public improvements, and other legislation that promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. What are some things that you feel that city council is doing well, and what are some things that you think need improvement?
Thank you for that question. First thing, I think we've been doing really well, is we have working sessions with city council, so actually, this is the budget season, as we would refer to it. You know, and it's really important for all of us to have input, and in those working sessions, we're able to ask lots of questions, you know, tackle all the different projects going on. One thing that I would like to do a little bit better, or for us to do a little bit better, is to incorporate some more transparency into that process. I think we have an opportunity to provide audio/video into council chambers, provide that it's recorded, and also give you at home the chance to see us, you know, see our discussions, see us live in the meeting. We did that through all of 2020. I think that it's very important for you to be able to see that and not have to come into city council. I know there's a lot of investment involved. I know there's a lot of staffing involved, but I think we have a chance to really figure it out this year, because it's 2021, and we need to give you that right to view us and, again, give you that transparency. One other thing is just that, you know, I'm a project manager for Cardinal Health. You know, I manage million-dollar projects. I'm also supervising a team of five project managers. You know, we tackle a lot of projects here. I'm very thankful to be on the Community Issues Committee as vice chair and also as Chair Safety Committee. I think we had a lot of accomplishments last year with the, you know, the purchasing of the fire truck, and we're finally breaking ground on the fire station. There's also a lot of improvements coming with the I-76 improvements, East Avenue project coming up. You know, there's just, there's a lot, there's a lot that we accomplished, given all the challenges in 2020, and there's a lot to come up. So I'm just very grateful to be on the committees that I'm on and listening to what the community has to say. I just want us to find creative ways to get community input and be able to respond as quickly as possible, and I really also enjoy being the voice of the community on council. I like to ask challenging questions. You know, I like to try to understand the legislation and really just, you know, be your voice in that transparent process. Thank you.
When I decided to run for city council, I had a lot of thinking to do. Obviously, I was, some of you may know me from working at the Talmadge Parks and Recreation Department. I was the Assistant Parks and Recreation Superintendent. I kind of had an opportunity come about that allowed me to run for city council and also step down from my position. And how that relates to how I think city council is doing, I do applaud city council's efforts in supporting the local Parks and Recreation Department, but I think that there's more, and I think that there's more support that needs to be done specifically in our police and fire. I also feel that, you know, obviously, Jonathan and I, not to bring age up, but we're definitely the youngest here, and we're a younger community. We're starting to develop into a younger community, and we need to have that proper age representation on city council. And I feel that, being that I have a young family, Jonathan has a young family, we both kind of fit that bill. What are we not doing well? You know, I think it's about that representation. I think there's times where the community will voice a concern, and sometimes that concern is looked at as, ah, you know, it's just, it's old man Joe complaining, you know, he's been like that since I knew him 40 years ago. That may be the case, but it's a concern to that gentleman, and I'm sure it's a concern to others in the community. And I want to find a way, just like Jonathan had mentioned, to find a way to have a better voice for those citizens, for those members of the community. Speaking of the work sessions, it's great, it's like you're reading my note card, Jonathan, because I think that some of those work sessions should also involve the department heads and some staff members within each of those departments. So specifically, you know, Fire Chief is here tonight, and I think the Fire Chief should be present, but then, you know, pull in some of the younger firemen that are on there. They're essentially going to be the individuals that take over that department one day, so give them a voice. Let them have some input into the direction of the department, in the direction of the future of the department.
I guess the question is, what does council do right, and what council should possibly think about changing in itself? I think council does a lot of things right. I think we have a good group of men and women on our council right now, who all have the same interest of what's best for our community. But I look at things a little different. I think anybody who's watched me on council realizes I do look at things, I look at things very long-term. What's going to benefit our community long-term? Don't get excited about the short-term benefits when the business comes to town, and everybody's excited about a big new business coming in, new jobs coming in, but we have to look at the long-term growth of our community. A lot of the residents I've spoke to have said, you know, they're nervous about the traffic on East Avenue, the development within our community, and some people look at it as an uncontrolled growth in our community. I think that's something we have to look at. We have to make sure that while we reap the benefits of the short term, we also look at the long-term process of what's going to be good for the community long-term, and I think that's very important. Something council should, I think, get a little more involved in, and I've served a lot of time on councils and councils and overseen councils, and I don't think we're, I don't think we get involved enough into the long-term portion of our community. I don't think we set goals like we should be on council. We have a budget coming up here in a couple weeks, and this year, I haven't really heard anyone say, gee, I'd like to see this be put in the budget or that be put into the budget for the long-term of our community, the benefit of our community. I truly believe in quality of life issues for our community, and I think that is something that we need to look at, whether we look at building a dog park or something else for the community, something positive. And I think council should have work sessions, talk about those things, and council should set goals for ourselves, whether they're next year, two years, or three years down the road, and I kind of, I don't really see that right now. Thank you.
My answer's much shorter, and that's unusual for me, but I feel that most of this council that I serve with does a very good job of responding to constituent questions and directing them to the proper administrative source to get help. I think we do a pretty good job of that. But I also believe that we have some on council that need to have a better understanding of our city finances and have a deeper understanding of what our fiduciary responsibility is in this capacity. There's so much apathy and nonparticipation in local politics today that those that voted us in really depend on us to make knowledgeable and informed decisions.
Okay, so being last, the first thing I'd like to say is thank you, Adam and Jonathan, for officially making me feel old, because 10 years ago, I was the young one on council.[1104.16][1104.16](LAUGHING). I think the city does a lot of things well, and I think city council does a lot of things well. One of the things that we do well is approve a balanced budget. We really do, but we can't do that without the help of the administration and particularly our Director of Finance, Molly Gilbreith. Without her, I mean, she is a stickler. She does a great job with the budget, and she does give us all the information that we need. We do have work sessions, and we're able to make tweaks or anything that we need to make. All of our input is accepted and, you know, acted on as appropriately. We do have healthy fund balances. It is balanced. We do limited deficit spending, and that's only for maybe a capital improvement of a one-time purchase. It's not something for continued spending. Since I started here on council 10 years ago, we did implement laptop computers in order to receive our agenda and legislation. I kind of pushed for that as soon as we got onto council, because I was getting, given this packet of paper that I'd look at once during, you know, before the meetings and then during the meetings, and then they, I'm like, what am I supposed to do with this? Oh, just throw it away. We've approved it, and that was a waste. So we upped our use of the laptop computers, which has really come in handy, especially when the pandemic hit. We were all very versed in the computers, and we were able to go right into our virtual meetings with Teams and Zoom and so forth, so that's been a great advantage for us. And one of the things that I think we really need to also improve with city council, with the way we run our city council, is we tend to, we have a summer recess, where typically it's been two meetings or two weeks of meetings throughout the summer, where we do not meet, and we have a summer recess. When I became president of council, I thought that was all excessive, so we've canceled one of those weeks out of each during the summer, and I believe, firmly believe that in January for next year, there's no reason why we need a summer recess at all. Everybody can plan their vacations accordingly. We have meetings every other, you know, twice a month, so we can plan vacations around that. There's no reason to have a summer recess. It kind of puts a hindrance on some of the other aspects that go on within the city, like planning and zoning approval items and so forth.
Thank you. So the next two questions were received from the public relating to property issues. Have you heard from the property line plating issues in the Village Green allotment, where the deed description does not match the plat lines and the property lines are all messed up? What ideas do you have for remedying this problem for the homeowners?
Thank you, Mia. So obviously, I did a little bit of research on this particular topic, and I am by no means an expert, but I certainly think that if there are issues within that community or within that allotment, the city can certainly step up and provide certain resources or at least make connections to the proper channels out there, specifically Summit County and their various departments down there that would specifically be involved in surveying. But with that, you know, we also need to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again, potentially in the future, so, you know, it hasn't been an issue, I don't feel, recently, other than this particular one allotment, and it's based on many, many years of probably 40, 50 years ago. So there's certainly some information there, some differences in technology there that probably didn't translate over and carry over an archive of records, but, you know, it's worth looking into to determine, are there some shortcomings in that particular procedure, and how do we make improvements to it?
You know, this is a 50-plus-year-old allotment, and somehow, over those years, the neighbors have all kind of given it the blind eye, and then one neighbor moves in and it becomes a problem. And I think I speak for my colleagues here, who all agreed that the city does have a little bit of liability with this problem, and that we have all agreed, I believe, that if they want to replat the allotment, that at least that area, the council would flip that or pay that fee for the replating of the allotment, and we can move forward hopefully from that way. If all the residents agree to replat, Mayor Klein, Councilwoman Kilaway, whose ward it is, we've all kind of discussed it and feel it's probably the best way to go to help these people out. Just one thing, if you have a problem in your allotment with where your boundary's at, you need to settle it out. Don't put it on the back burner, which has happened, and figure it'll go away. It doesn't go away. You need to deal with it as quick as possible, not put this off like this is gone, like this is a 50-year-old problem.
I agree with Chris. I'm well aware of the problem. When I received the email, actually Pam and I were out of town, but I called the resident, who I've known for over 40 years, told her exactly what she should do, who she should contact. I then notified the proper folks in the administration and the law director, and this issue is being addressed appropriately as we speak.
Okay, yes, I am extremely aware of this issue. I do live in Village Green allotment, and I have lived there for 31 years now. The problem does go back 55 years, when the development was established, the development was started, and then I guess there was some funding issues, so it was put on pause. Then there was ownership changes, and when they went to restart the development, lines were not followed properly, and there was a stretch of about six or seven homes that are extremely affected. To resolve this issue, the neighbors do need to get together, and they do need to decide where common sense lines should be drawn, based on where they've been maintaining, and this can be done through a minor subdivision and replat, as long as you have consent within five property owners or less. The problem is, is that all the property owners have to agree. In the specific case, there's some disagreement, so at this point in time, the city has no jurisdiction on property lines with this unless all the parties consent, so it does become a civil matter in this specific instance. But it can very easily be addressed by getting your neighbors together, establishing where you think the property lines should be, and the city will gladly replat that.
Yes, I am aware of this issue. Got a chance to listen to the residents in the last council meeting. I think it comes to, how can we, as a city or as council, help to just bring everyone to the table? I understand, you know, we are, you know, we're Talmadge. This is Talmadge. We're a community. There has to be a way for us to try to get these people to come to the table. I think that there's, this scenario is an exception to the rule. You know, there's got to be some sort of mediation or arbitration available to us. You know, nobody wants to go down the path of a lawsuit or something like that. Obviously, that's very costly, and, you know, for people who've been maintaining that property for decades and, you know, keeping it up and, you know, having really good relationships with their neighbors, and then, you know, this is just very unfortunate. I will also say, before that property were to ever change hands again, you know, that should be an opportunity to make it right, but obviously, it should be made right as soon as possible, but I think there's an opportunity for us to try to help. You know, if one neighbor in particular doesn't want to come to the table, I think that we should do whatever we can to try to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. In regards to the devil strips, whose responsibility are the trees trimming in the sidewalks, whether installed by the city, a builder, or a homeowner? If elected, would you change how city handles this?
Yeah, tree lawns, the trees belong to, were planted many times. It used to be the city was a tree city. We would go out every year and spend thousands of dollars planting trees throughout the community. Fran Martin, who served on council, said one time, he said, I don't understand it. We spend tens of thousands of dollars planting trees in the spring, and then we come back in the fall and spend tons of thousands of dollars picking up leaves. He says, we're kind of in a vicious cycle here, and I think he was right. Many of those trees that were planted didn't quite make it, and they picked up the sidewalks and so forth, and I really feel that the city, if the tree isn't that bad at disrepair, should be removed, the sidewalks should be repaired and so forth, but it is the residents' responsibility to maintain those trees, maintain that property, and unfortunately, if the tree is lifting it, it's probably best to have the tree removed, and I think the city will take care of that portion, but the rest of it is back on the resident.
It is the homeowner's responsibility. That was one of the early things I tackled when I was Service Director. Again, I think it makes no sense, you know. We made developers put trees in that they didn't want to plant, the residents didn't want, and then the sidewalks buckle, and we make the homeowner replace the sidewalk because of a tree they didn't want to begin with. It makes absolutely no sense, and some would say that that is government at its worst. So I addressed it with Mayor Klein's support, and then now, Service Director Rohr has taken it an additional level, and I think our program is working well and is very fair.
Okay, yes, the devil's strip is the city's right-of-way. That area is needed for utilities and so forth, and yes, trees were planted there by the city or by developers or even by the residents themselves, and it is the homeowner's responsibility to take care of those. The city does have their concrete program, and as of right now, they're actively, they examine the sidewalks that have potentially possibly raised because of the roots of those trees. Those trees are Bradford pear tree, which are 30-some years old, and they're just breaking down right and left. The roots are, you know, coming to the surface and breaking The roots are, you know, coming to the surface and breaking sidewalks. So the city will remove the tree for free, and then they will pay fifty percent of the cost to fix the sidewalk. And then the homeowner, if the homeowner wants to keep the tree, then the homeowner is responsible for getting the sidewalk fixed at a hundred percent. And yes, that is a program that our Service Director Mike Rohr has put together over the last three years. He's also put on a moratorium for planting trees in the tree line, and that's until he could finalize a responsible plan. And I believe that that plan is going to be in front of council sometime in November, which includes an arborist to advise the type of tree that can be planted in that tree line, as well as how big of a tree line you have as to whether a tree could even be planted in there.
Yeah, so the one thing I learned so far on council, regarding the sidewalks aren't surveyed like the roads are, so a lot of it is complaint-based. And being on Community Issues Committee, you know, you get a lot of phone calls, a lot of it is initiated. So if those slabs are offset or, you know, not level, you know, we get the complaint or it's fielded, you know, through the administration. But that's really, from my experience, what initiates the action to fix it. I do think, and then regarding the trees, you know, we got a lot of complaints last year on the tree trimming program. You know, I believe we negotiated a flat rate for the tree, but we also give the resident the option to trim it themselves. But also, that creates somewhat of a safety hazard, you know, depending on if you have an elderly person or someone on a ladder. You know, I received that complaint as well, that they shouldn't have to take that risk. So definitely been fielding a lot of calls on that last year, but we do have that negotiated rate. But I think we could do better, just, again, this goes back to communication. You know, I received more calls on people getting the surprise letter on their door saying, "Hey, you know, this needs done," or "We're going to do it for you by this date for sixty-five bucks," or, you know, "The sidewalk is the fifty-fifty rip program." The thing with that, again, it's, you know, from my experience, you get a phone call, it's a complaint, and, you know, the city does split that with you. But again, you know, depending on if you have two or three slabs, or if you're talking five to seven slabs, you know, that adds up very quick. So again, I think it all comes back to transparency. And in terms of the trees, you know, hanging low, you know, if you're going on a walk, you know, in certain neighborhoods, I'm very quick to respond to that. And, you know, we, I feel like we field a lot of those calls. I try to, when we open up Community Issues at council during meetings, I try to bring up that in my report, you know, on the different issues that I field, and just to make sure that we're bringing that up as we're given a report. So I'll continue to do whatever I can to bring the complaints back to the Service Department and the Street Department, to see what we can do to continue to improve that going forward.
Well, there's not much left to cover when you go last. But there are a few other things that I think we could potentially do. Just like Jonathan had mentioned, you know, working with the citizens and being more complaint-based. You know, as a candidate here tonight, I would certainly offer my services, my own time, to assist with, you know, the zoning department or Public Service Department to kind of do an assessment of the city and where we're at as of today. And looking into the future, when we build new allotments, like Mr. Lowery had mentioned, you know, if the homeowner doesn't want that tree, why put it there? So there might be some changes that we put in place in regards to landscaping requirements that we put on our home builders and developers when we put in a new development. So I think there's a few other little things we can tweak to make improvements to it. But I do agree with everyone else that the city will remove that tree, and then you will split the cost of the sidewalk replacement.
Thank you. Next, we have a couple of questions from the public about partisan politics and its role in our city. Being that Talmage is a partisan city, how do you see that playing a role in your decision-making and your overall camaraderie with the council as a whole?
I don't want to go first. You have to have a sense of humor. So, I only have a minute. Chris and Diane, very good friends of ours. Dave and Sue, probably two of our best friends. We raised our kids together. Chris and I are now raising our grandchildren together in this community. So we share a lot more in common, both nationally and locally, than we disagree. We, the six of us and others, may only disagree on a handful of national issues, very few local issues. And our partisanship doesn't show itself outwardly very often. Every four years, when you vote for council president, it shows itself. The party in charge is going to name one of their folks to be council president, and that's okay. That's the rules of the game, I get that. I have always been collaborative, have worked well with others, respect others' opinions. I don't try to change their mind. I will be open, though, to them changing mine after I think things through. And our real differences, I mean, the Democrats in our city, and I don't use that term in a negative connotation, but they've been in control for over twenty years, both administratively in all the elected offices and also on council. And the only two areas, really, that I disagree with my friends on the other side, and they're two big ones. The two are the way personnel has been handled in the past, although Mayor Klein has done a tremendous job with his administration in changing the way we do that in a much better way. And I disagree with the priorities that were in place years ago with the way we issued non-voted debt. I think the way that was done was prioritized incorrectly, and I think that it has handcuffed us for the last twenty years with at least ten more to go.
Okay, yes, I am a Democrat, and I do believe my Democratic beliefs guide me in my decision-making. However, this is Talmage City Council, and we are elected to make decisions based on, on behalf of all of Talmage, regardless of their political affiliation. And I think that my decisions are made on what's best for all of the Talmage residents. I think the camaraderie that we have on council as a whole is excellent. We all get along on and off the council floor. We're all respectful. Each and every person on council does bring a different, unique perspective and viewpoint. Our discussions, I believe, show that we have been able to get things done for our residents, and I think we have a great rapport on council.
So, when I ran for council, obviously, I'm a conservative Republican, and I was told, when I first was collecting signatures, that there's no way I would win. There's no way that a Republican could win in Talmage. And then that just actually motivated me and drove me further to knock on doors and get my name out there, get the message out there. And one thing I just want to call out, it's really about balance. I mean, when I won, surviving two recounts by one vote, you know, when I walked in council chambers that first day, you know, I won by one vote, unseated and incumbent, and, you know, wasn't really, you know, initially in the club, if you will. But in terms of camaraderie, you know, everybody's very polite, very professional and whatnot, you know, nothing there. I will say, just reiterating, it's really about balance. So, you know, when I joined council, you know, you had, you know, five Democrats, you know, one Republican, one Independent, then went to the Republican Party. So with that, it's just, you know, you walk in the council chambers and, you know, that's kind of in the air, if you will. But again, going back to camaraderie, everybody was always very polite, very respectful. You know, we voice our views. I'm happy that I have a conservative view on, at the table. I think it's important to show that perspective at the table, you know, hitting on the point. You know, we're reflecting the views of all of Talmage, so that's why I'm just continuing to use the word "balance," because it's very important that everyone in the city has a voice at the table. Thank you.
I think I can best answer this question, being that I am not currently on council. But I think my military experience comes into play here, because when you're in the military, you serve with men and women that are of different ages, races, religions, ethnicities, and you learn to work together. You have to work together. And that's certainly stuck with me in all of my different careers. And that's something that I will definitely continue to do if I am elected onto council, because I think ultimately it goes back to, you know, yes, I definitely have conservative values. I have values that, you know, I want to see what's best for my family, I want to see what's best for the families of Talmage. But I think it's what's best for our city overall. And I think that that is something that, working together with those on council, I don't see being a problem, because I think, if anything, we all have a passion for Talmage. I don't think any of us would do this job if we didn't.
In my twenty-four years or so of service to the community, I don't recall ever seeing an issue come to city council that was voted upon strictly down party lines. And I'm not talking about the vote on the president of council, that usually is. But there is no Democratic chuckle, Republican chuckle, Democratic water line, Republican sewer line, or anything. It's what's best for the people of the community. And whether I'm a Democrat or Dennis is a Republican, you need to judge us on who we are and what we want to get done for our community. Because when it comes to local politics, there is nothing different between Dennis and I. We're good friends, we've laughed, and we've joked, and talked to our wives back and forth. It comes to local politics, it's about who's going to get something done for you, who's going to get this or that. Talmage, yes, we have had for about twenty-some years Democrats. Mayor Hood was the last Republican, then you had Mayor Wozinski, myself, and Mayor Klein. But when you look at how Talmage votes in the state and the national election, Talmage will vote Republican. We are what they call swing city, go back and forth. So there is no, it's not like Talmage is a staunch Democratic city or a staunch Republican city. Talmage votes on people for whom they have trust in and what they want to get done. And as far as that goes, I have served with some excellent men that I'm proud to call friends on council, whether it was John Rensselaar or Dennis Lowery or Dennis Jenkins. All great people, served our community regardless of their party.
Thank you. Some council members have changed partisanship during their term. Do you believe this is misleading to the voters, and would you keep the same party affiliation throughout your four-year term?
Okay, I'll make this short and sweet. Do I believe that this is misleading to the voters? Yes, I do. Will you keep, will I keep my same party affiliation through my four-year term? Absolutely.
So the second question, will I keep my party affiliation? Absolutely. I ran as a Republican, I am a Republican, and I will remain a Republican. Regarding the question on misleading, you know, I'm going to really leave that up to the voter to decide. I'm not one to judge and, you know, try to assume things. So I'm going to leave that as it may. But I can tell you that I'm a registered Republican, and I will remain so. Thank you.
I'll answer the second question first as well. My party affiliation is the Republican Party. And just as Jonathan had mentioned, it will continue to be. I don't plan on making any changes to that affiliation. In regards to changing and being misleading to voters, I think it, honestly, a particular question targets one of us up here. And I don't feel that it's an appropriate question for this evening. I feel that the individual that is probably in question, it's not necessary, it doesn't need to be asked, because I know this person, and this person has their best interests in mind for the city. And I think that that is definitely going to continue.
I've actually known two people on council who have changed their politics. It doesn't, didn't change the person. They were the same person regardless of how they voted in that primary. And when I ever changed my politics, well, I was just appointed the Summit County Democrat the year last night, and if I changed parties, I would probably tick off a lot of people. So no, don't expect that of me.
I got a great big bullseye. So, my answer is going to go back to some of how Chris answered the last question. So those that really care about this kind of thing, from a loyalty perspective to party, will look and see that, over the years, I've been, I've been a Democrat, I've been an Independent, and I've been a Republican. All because of what I chose to do to help a qualified candidate that I believed in in a local election. So if I really supported somebody that happened to be a D, I voted for them in the primary. Because if they don't win the primary, they don't get on the November ballot. And if I believe in somebody, that's what I'll do. And so that has got me in hot water with big party people, especially on the R side. And that's okay, because I can take, I can take them being mad at me. I was an I specifically for a long time, because Mayor Klein is one of my best friends. And he was running for mayor, and an R, running against him, said some very malicious lies about him. And actually, my wife started the Republicans for Klein at that time, because we were so disgusted with the way the local party was campaigning. Then, when I went to work for Mayor Klein, I was an I, but everyone still assumed I was an R. And you got to remember, that was an at-will job. And if you don't think Mayor Klein took some heat from within his own party for giving me that job, you're pretty naive about the process. And so when Mayor Klein ran again, a different candidate at this time said some awful things again about he and I that were just totally lies. And so I decided to run as an I, because I wanted to beat the R. The guy was not, the person was not a good council person. And I don't care what the letter was after his name, I ran specifically to beat that person. Then you come to the political climate that we're in now, and when you're an I, I did some soul-searching, and I felt that people really didn't understand who I was or what I stood for, that didn't know me. The longtime people did. But our city is transitioning, and the newcomers may not have. And so if I was going to wear a label, or had to wear a label to be effective, I wanted someone to know that Pam and I were evangelical Christians, that we have certain social things that we believe in, that that party tends to believe in, and that I come from a business background, and that I am very fiscally conservative. So that's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is, if re-elected, I will not change party affiliation during my term.
Thank you. The next two questions are from the public about first responders. The safety forces have been understaffed for many years, especially the police department. Is it a priority for you to work with the mayor to bring those numbers? Is it a priority for you to work with the mayor to bring those numbers up to the appropriate levels? What is your position on defunding the police?
As chair of the Safety Committee, I will fully do whatever I can to help bring those numbers up. I think us taking advantage of the police national testing that we've been discussing on council is a good, a good step forward. It opens the window for the potential candidates that we can, we can recruit. So I will do anything I can to help make that a priority. Obviously, our safety forces are extremely important, and we need to have a strong staffing levels for those. We just completed the part-time fire contract negotiations, which was, which was great because now we can move forward with the, the police negotiations. And again, as chair of the Safety Committee, I just want to say I do whatever I can to, to help ensure we have strong staffing levels for both police and fire. And regarding, you know, the defunding the police, you know, I, I back the blue, as they say. You know, I strongly support our police, and I will forever. My brother's a police officer. I have many, many good family and friends that are police officers, and I will always support our police and fire. Thank you.
What is my position on defunding the police? I'm a big supporter of our police. Our safety forces have to be funded, and they have to be funded properly. In regards to working with the mayor to bring those numbers up to the appropriate levels, I think that that's a must. I think we have to do that. Doing some research, it does appear that perhaps in our command staff level, that we don't have the staffing levels that we could have. So if that causes issues within the department, then we need to assess that. We need to make improvements within that. If there has not been a study done, we should be doing a study. Where does our department compare to other departments of communities of similar size? That's certainly something that I think could be done. I know we conducted that when we were doing our comprehensive plan within the Parks and Recreation Department, which, again, showed we were understaffed. So I believe that that would probably be the case for our police department when that study is done. And yeah.
As a former mayor, I can tell you, if you ask any department head, do you have enough employees? The answer is always no. You know, whether it's the Recreation Department, the Road Department, the Water Department, Police Department, Fire Department, everybody's going to tell you, gee, we need more people. You just can't, can't run out and start hiring people without some valid reason to do it. You have to determine, is crime increasing? Is there a problem here? Do we have retirements coming? Are some of our employers, employees getting older? Why do we want to hire more employees? It's great to yellow, I back the blue, let's go hire more cops. But you keep in mind, a policeman's going to cost the city $100,000, $140,000 a year, the cost of a police officer. It's expensive. So when you start talking about that, you have to figure out, you know, do you really and truly need it? I really believe that the police chief, and he has not come to me and say, hey, Chris, and he's a friend of mine, been there for quite a while, he has not come to me and say, hey, we're short X amount of people. And I would expect to hear from him, as well as Mayor Klein, and to be given an argument why we need to hire people. If the argument's there and it's justified, then we need to do it. We don't put it off. We need to do it. You don't put people at risk in the community. Safety's the most important thing people look at when they look at a community, the safety, the police and fire department. So I'm not sure if I ever answered your question, but that's what it is.
In all my years of being involved with the city, either as a, as an elected official or as an employee in Mayor Klein's administrative staff, I've not one time participated in a conversation or have seen a study that said that, that our residents were not being serviced properly by our police department, or that our policemen were put in danger because of staffing issues. Not one conversation, not one report, not one study. Now, having said that, the city has hired a consultant, and they're going to do a comprehensive study of that department. So we may, we may get some data from that that suggests that we need to do something. And if we do, I'm sure that Mayor Klein will put it in the budget. I'm a huge supporter of our police department, and, and I would never, ever vote to defund them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll start with the second part of the question first as well. I am also a very big supporter of the police department. They do an excellent job here in Talmadge. We're so fortunate to have the police officers that we do have and the department that we do have, and I would never, ever defund the police. Just, just, just not right. But I do know that hiring for both the police and the fire departments have been an issue in a lot of communities recently. The number of applicants that take civil service tests are low. They're not what they were 10 years ago. The city has implemented like a direct hire program for the police department where they can hire from other communities, and they always already have this, the criteria and the credentials and so forth. But that's still a long process. It takes about a year to hire a police officer or even a fireman from start to finish, from doing the testing all the way to hiring. It's approximately a year to get that all done. The direct hire has cut that down to, I think, about six to eight months. And we did recently add the National Testing Agency so that we could throw our net out wider instead of just a test, which I think is going to help. So I do know that it is an issue, hiring officers and firemen at this time. And I do know that there are some openings, either not right this minute, they are coming up due to retirements and leaving the job.
Thank you. A lot of politicians say that they support their local police and fire departments. If elected, how would you support your local police and fire departments through your actions?
I think this question kind of goes into kind of a character question, honestly, because a lot of my experience within the community has been involvement with police and fire, specifically the fire department, working with deputy fire chief on conducting some first aid CPR classes within the community. And, you know, I, I think that that, you know, actions speak louder than words, and I certainly would want to continue to do things like that for the community. I also feel like we have to, as council members, kind of get down into our frontline workers and determine, you know, what is it that they truly need? You know, build those personal relationships with them. You know, Mr. Grimm mentioned being friends with the police chief. That's great, but if the police chief thinks we're good, but the guy working on Saturday night doesn't, he may not voice that to the police chief. We need to be down there in the, in the frontline workers and determining, you know, what is it that you guys need? What is it you're lacking? How can we make improvements? And, you know, I would pledge to visit those stations, the police station, the fire stations, gain a better understanding from them, do some ride-alongs with them, and, you know, understand where they're at funding-wise and staffing-wise.
It's kind of a sad thing, I think, when policing and fire has become a political issue. People are putting signs in your yard, I back the blue. I mean, I don't know. I just find it a shame. I think police and fire shouldn't be a political issue. I don't think it should. I think that you need to give your policemen and your firemen respect, okay? Don't put a sign in your yard. Just when you see an officer, don't call him a cop. He's a police officer. And thank him. And tell the man to be careful, that you got his back and you're supporting him. He doesn't need a sign in your yard. He just needs respect. And that's the same thing with the firemen. That's the same thing with the guy in the road department, the guy in the sewer department. Let me tell you, if your sewer backs up, you probably pay anything for a plumber versus a paramedic for a short period of time. City workers overall sometimes get a bad rap. And politicians have been the first one to jump on the bandwagon and beat them up. We need to make sure that our police and firemen have the respect they would need, the equipment they need, the facilities they work out of, and everything else they need, as well as a decent pay and benefits. It's important. They need to get what they deserve. So if you want to back the blue, back the red, back the guy in the road department. Back them all.
I've always supported our safety services. I worked with both chiefs pretty closely on project requests for their budget when I was a service director. Actually, that's been a long time now, and Chief Passerelli's just now getting his, his parking lot paved. So it takes a while. It takes a while to get things done when you have budget constraints. I would, I would encourage anyone to reach out to Chief Passerelli or Chief Williams and, and ask them if they think I've been supportive over the years. Don't take my word for it. I also will tell you that I have a reputation of keeping confidential conversations confidential. So the rank and file, many of them know that they can come with me and voice a concern. And, and I can, I can lead that for them, with them being able to remain anonymous and not worry about any perceived retribution. And I think they appreciate that.
All right, thank you. I do believe that Talmadge has two of the best safety forces in Summit County, if not in the state of Ohio. I do think that actions speak louder than words, and I absolutely support the safety forces, especially because my husband, Tom, is on the Talmadge Fire Department. He has been a part-time firefighter EMT for 38 years. He has served this city proudly, and as, you know, as my husband, I have served with him. It really has impacted our family life, especially since he has a separate full-time job. So he has to work his fire department shifts on the weekends, and the fact that he puts his life on the line for all of our citizens. So I do believe that I do support the safety forces. Making sure that our safety forces have the resources that they need to do their jobs safely and effectively is very important. Since being on council, I've helped approve numerous items that have helped them. The biggest one, the new fire station and the new Tower One, new fire ladder that we have. There's also updates going on to the, at the police station very soon. We put in CO exhaust systems into both the fire stations. A new multimedia, a multimillion-dollar radio system was put in along with all of Summit County to help them with their communications, new computer software in the police cruisers that link all of Summit County together. And just working with the county to bring together the Consolidated Dispatch Center to the city of Talmadge, that's also another bonus for our city, but that will help our safety forces.
Thank you. I think it just comes back to following through on our commitments. When I was walking door-to-door in 2019, knocked on an individual's door, and they hand me a tax levy flyer for the safety forces a few years before my time in Talmadge, and they posed me with a question of, you know, why didn't this happen? You know, in terms of the, the fire station and some staffing, why didn't this happen? I really didn't have the answers at that time. What I can tell you now is that I will follow through on our commitments, you know, voting for the new fire truck, Tower One, you know, voting for fire station number two, you know, the breaking ground that's actively being built right now, you know, and just trying to be a champion of, you know, not being kept in the dark. So, you know, making sure the chiefs understand that, you know, they can, they can come to council. You know, I want to make sure that we have constant two-way communication whenever it is deemed needed. You know, specifically, you know, if, if we're going through, you know, one recent example I had that came to my mind was around, you know, our staffing models, you know, whether it's around the, the part-time fire or police. I understand there's certain, there's certain meetings, certain conversations council cannot be in because of confidentiality, but I also realize that we have a lot of input, that we can give a lot of different ideas on, on our staffing and how to be, how to stay at a healthy level of staff and recruiting tactics, and different staffing models that we can, we can try, you know, to make sure that we're, we're at a healthy volume. So with that, you know, I'll continue to do what I can on the Safety Committee to support police and fire in any way that I can, and anything that, that we commit to, I'll make sure that we continue to follow through on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we ask the next question, if anyone has a question online, please submit them in the chat or here in the auditorium. Please get ready to ask them from the podium. There is very little to no cell service around the rec center slash high school area. This is a real safety issue. What can we do to fix this?
Yeah, I got this question on Saturday, and since there are four council people sitting on this table, I'm sure by Thursday's meeting, it'll be given to the IT person for the city of Talmadge and have it looked into. So that's really all you have to do is just tell one of us. I'm sure there's four, but if anyone's behalf to take care of this, so I'm sure will be turning us over to the city and having it looked into, taken care of.
Thank you. I live in the area. I work from home. Both my boys live within that area. They work from home. One of my daughter-in-laws works from home. I see Mr. and Mrs. Larson in the audience. Pat works from home. So we've, we've been living this for a long time. And, and I was on the school board when the school was built, and, and we realized we had a problem back then. The problem really got exaggerated with COVID with so many people working from home. Phone rings off the, I, I get a call once a week with someone yelling at me that they just had a business call drop. And, and you, you cannot be on your phone in your car between the, the little church next to the stadium until you pass Barnes Drive, or you will drop the call. I'm just going, so. Our IT department is well aware of it. Mr. Rohr is well aware of it. The mayor is. Superintendent Wood is. We have contacted the providers. I've been told that because there is so much vacant land there, that the providers can't justify the infrastructure expense to build a tower because they can't make money. And I, I may not have all the details about that correct, but it's not, it's not a new problem, and it's not one that the city, along with the school district, has not been addressing for a long time.
In 2009, when my daughter Courtney came to Talmadge High School as a freshman, you think cell service is bad now? It was terrible then. You would come into this auditorium, and you would have zero service at all. I know the city of, the school district has done something within the building to help improve it. It is better now than what it was, but we are very aware of this issue. We did receive an email from our IT back in August. He is actively working with Verizon on the city's coverage and performance. Verizon is stating that there's some growing pains due to the rollout of the 5G, but they are aware of the situation, and they're planning on doing something to improve it.
I just want to echo, you know, I have this issue as well at my home. I just want to encourage everybody that community input's very important and to go through the channels. You know, reach out to your council person, you know, reach out to the administration, report it, you know, through the city's website. We, we just need to continue to encourage everyone to follow the proper channels. All of our phone numbers and email. to follow the proper channels. All of our phone numbers and emails are listed, as well as on the website. There's various means to get us all a message. I can tell you, when I get these complaints, again, when we open Community Issues Committee, I try to do what I can to give a brief synopsis of what happened in the last two weeks. This has come up before. I think this and power outages are probably the highest number of complaints I received last year. So the administration is aware of it. And, you know, I'll help in any way that I can to try to fix the issue. But we're well aware of the issue. And I also, like I said, work from home. And this is an issue that we need to try to remediate. Thank you.
When I worked for the Parks and Recreation Department, I worked inside the rec center. My office was in there. If my wife needed to get ahold of me, she called my desk phone because the cellphone was not going to work. There is no way. We definitely have a problem with that. It is a big safety concern. It is a big safety issue. We have an area of Talmadge that hosts a lot of events, being that it's the rec center. There's athletic events going on here at the school. And yet, we can't get proper cell service in this area? That's concerning. I believe we even had an issue here in the high school, and they had to kind of do a relay of, hey, call 911, and relay all the way out the door to the outside because you can't make a call inside. That's a problem. As an American Heart Association First Aid CPR instructor, one of the things that we tell everybody is, put your cellphone on speakerphone. Set it beside you. The dispatch will walk you through it if you don't know how to do CPR. As I'm explaining to my staff at the rec center, that was always the biggest kind of laugh, is, well, what do we do when we're inside the rec center? Because we're not going to get cell service. So it's definitely a safety concern. It is a bigger issue, I think, that we need to take it more seriously. Obviously, I know our IT department's aware of it. It's been ongoing since I was at the rec center, and I served, I worked there for six years. So it's been an issue for quite a while. And I think we need to do everything we can to make something happen with it, to change something, whether that's, you know, enhancing our public-private partnerships with Verizon, or any other cell company, or cell repeater tower, whatever it is. We need to make sure that we get on it, and we do it immediately.
Thank you. So now we'd like to open it up to the public. We have time for a few more questions, but we'd like to hear from the public. Does anybody have, here have any questions they'd like to ask? I have a few questions from a gentleman in the audience. This is to all candidates. Are there any plans to add sidewalks to the main arteries so that kids will not have to walk in the streets?
I believe I'm going first. And I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear. Was it, it was sidewalks to?
Yes. Are there any plans to add sidewalks to the main arteries so that kids will not have to walk in the streets?
Right. So with my experience being in Parks and Recreation, a big study was done, actually, about adding hike-and-bike type trails throughout the city. I even actually have a map that kind of routes it throughout the entire city. I think that those sort of things would be extremely beneficial to our community. We have a great hike-and-bike trail that runs right through our community. And a lot of other communities have kind of figured it out and said, hey, we're going to branch off of this. And I think that's something that Talmadge is really missing the boat on. We need to take advantage of that. There's, in particular, if you're familiar with the Medina area, they have a very nice kind of hike-and-bike type trail that goes right up to their school, right out of the main developments in that area, right up to their school. I think that that is something that we should certainly be looking into.
Appreciate the hike-and-bike trail. We built that my first term in office. And it's a great thing. It's been expanded on to become the Freedom Trail, which is originally just a Talmadge hike-and-bike trail. But I think the bigger question is, we have sidewalks and allotments that go absolutely nowhere. If you're in Old Orchard, you walk down the sidewalk, and it stops soon you leave the allotment. I think our sidewalks need to go somewhere. We need to look at extending sidewalks within residential neighborhoods. We need to put sidewalks on Monroe Road or hook up. You should be able to, I really think you should be able to walk from your home to the Talmadge Circle and be on a sidewalk. The more important thing, I think, as you look at that, are the open ditches that still exist in this community. There are open ditches you could lose a small car in. And I think those need to be addressed because that's probably even more dangerous than not having a sidewalk. So I think it's one of those things that we kind of talked about earlier, that council should be looking at things to improve, quality of life issues in the community. That's one of them. Sidewalks need to go somewhere, and they need to hook up, and they need to be able to go from Old Orchard all the way to Talmadge Circle. We've built sidewalks at East Avenue and partially down Monroe Road, but we never continued that process. And I think that'd be a great thing for council to start putting money into the budget every year to extend sidewalks, and not assess people on the main roads to put them in, because they really do benefit everybody in the region.
So this was part of my responsibility when I was the economic developer. So the Therafair Plan was part of economic development, and actually was also part of my responsibilities as a service director. And we have done studies in the past. And because of the width of some of our roads where needed, and the ditches that Chris makes reference to, and the cost of land acquisition, whether that is mutually beneficial, or heaven forbid the word eminent domain, it becomes very, very cost prohibitive to do when you have other priorities on your plate. So, you know, again, I haven't sat in the mayor's seat like Chris has, or Mayor Klein. But right now, the priority is getting that signalization done at Washburn, and addressing the road width of East Avenue out to Brimfield. And so even though the sidewalk is important, it will continue to get pushed down the list unless we get some other types of funding through Mrs. Kitter's department as community development. So if she's able to get us a grant specifically for that, then maybe we can tackle that. In the meantime, if we do fix it, it's going to be within the budget process, and it's going to be hodgepodge at best.
Thank you. I do believe that there's a lot of sidewalks in this town that go nowhere. I know on South Avenue, on the west side of South Avenue, you can go from Talmadge Circle on a sidewalk up until just past the bridge right before you get to SD Myers. And then the sidewalk just kind of stops. And there's nothing except for the side of the road until you get to approximately Sammy's Restaurant, then the sidewalk starts again. I have always loved to put, you know, finish that sidewalk. I think that would be great. And in my conversations with the mayor and the service director, you know, according to our city ordinances, the Ohio Revised Code, that would be fine to do, but it's at the expense of the homeowners. And so you can't ask the homeowners, oh, can you just spend, you know, $5,000 so we could put, you know, a sidewalk in front of your house? That's, you know, just something that, where it would be nice, according to our rules right now, it just can't be done. Would I love to have bike lanes put in along Talmadge? I think that would be a great idea, because right now, you know, they're riding on the roads and so forth. But yeah, I do think that sidewalks need to be added on. And I think, Mr. Lowry, thank you for, you know, your comments on how we needed to fund it a certain way. I think that we absolutely do. The way our funding mechanism is right now, that's just not really possible. Thank you.
Thank you. The one thing I'll add that hasn't already been said, you know, I support the idea of investigating adding sidewalks. But at the same time, I want to be cautious in what we're signing our residents up for in terms of a cost. So right now, we mentioned earlier, the 50-50 program for repairs. You know, if a slab's off a little bit, you know, you're going to have flooding issues. You know, going back to the ditches, I've fielded a lot of flooding concerns already. You know, we have debris or limbs that fall into the ditches. You get a, you know, I get a phone call, go back to the Streets or Service Department, and then they investigate. You know, then you get into a back and forth on, you know, is this, is this the city's liability? Is this the resident's liability? So I think we just need to just make sure we assess that very carefully, to make sure that we're not signing someone up for a cost that they didn't ask for. Regarding the East Avenue, I believe with the widening project, there is discussion on a bike lane. I recall in a prior conversation. So that's positive, at least because of the amount of traffic that they're going to see over there. But yeah, at the end of the day, it's really just investigating, you know, grants, funding options available, and then prioritization in the budget through our working sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. On the current ballot, there are eight proposed character amendments that the city of Talmadge. We'll put these on the screen so the public can review them. Are there any that you are passionately for or against? Please explain.
We're going to start with Mr. Lowry.
Thank you. I have been involved in four of these in some degree, in or manner, as Chris has, and of course, Mayor Klein. So this was our third charter review. And I agree with all of the recommendations that were made by the commission. I was more involved than I wish I needed to be, because I wanted to make sure that a certain conservative perspective was at least minimally discussed on some of these issues. And they were, in fairness. The commission was very gracious in letting me participate. And I agree with the recommendations that were made. My only caveat is that I believe it's point C on the graph. And that is where the mayor may appoint an alternate to boards and commissions. And I just felt that the word "may" should have been replaced with the word "shall." There's a legal difference there. And, but it wasn't. But I'm still fine with the intent.
Thank you. During the last charter review sessions, I was fortunate enough to be able to participate in a couple of them. And I did listen to all of them after they were, because they were all recorded, and they were all done virtually. And I do, I am in favor of all of the proposed charter amendments. I do think that there is one that I think is pretty critical, and that is the one that states eliminating a temporary absence from the city as a basis for the president of council to temporarily perform the duties of mayor and the vice president, temporarily performing the duties of president of council. I think this is an important amendment, because the way it is written right now, if the mayor goes out of town, then the president of council becomes the acting mayor. So if he goes to Cogge Falls for a meeting, then the president of council becomes the acting mayor. And that's just, in this day and age, it's not feasible. It's not, it just shouldn't be. If the mayor, the mayor can go anyplace within the country and with his laptop and still perform his duties as a mayor. So I think that's an important one that we need to make sure that we take care of.
For me, again, this was my first year on council. And I, right now, in reviewing the list, you know, point letter H, I have an issue with that, only because of the experience I went through. So essentially, I was given a list of appointment names two hours before the meeting. I'm not originally from Talmadge. You know, I married into Talmadge. I've been here close to 10 years. I did not know anyone on the list. I happen to know the law director, and I knew the person that I ran against in 2019. Other than that, I didn't have any information to go off of to vote, to confirm an appointment. So I went to the Board of Elections website, because it's the only thing I had available to me, and looked up different items, like party affiliation, you know, age, what war did they live in. I tried to make sure that the commission itself was representative of the entire city. And what I learned is there was not one registered Republican on the commission. There were seven Democrats and four independents. Again, I did not know these people at the time personally. I didn't have a relationship with them, and I'm not from here. All I had was that information I had available to me to vote off of. So I voted no for the initial commission, on record. And to answer the question, that was the only bullet point that I had an issue with, that I think there could have been some language in this bullet point specifically to prevent that from happening, so that there's a balanced commission representing the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe on, as a whole, all of the points are, or the suggested changes for the charter amendment are okay. I do, as Jonathan mentioned, I do also have some hesitation on letter H as well, because of the topics that Jonathan had mentioned. I think that if we are being represented up here by people within different wards and at large, we should maybe take a look at that as being something similar with the Charter Review Commission. I don't know exact ages of some of those individuals, but I would venture to say that it probably was not as diverse as it could have been. And it certainly was not a partisan committee.
I've sat on two of the last three charter commissions. I was on the commission that actually set the charter for the city, which was adopted. And I served Mayor Klein appointed me to one 10 years ago. And pretty much, charter commission looks through the charter and sees if there's any tweaks or improvements to it. And we're really getting to the point where there's not a whole lot you can improve upon. The discussion about the people put on the charter commission, I need to remind my fellow members of council, we are a continuing charter commission. We have the right, as a council, to make amendments to our charter anytime we want to. So Jonathan, if you had a problem, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just, if there was a problem in the charter, and you thought, boy, this isn't quite right, all you have to do is go to the other six members of council, saying, look, this should be changed. We have, as a group, have the ability to put that on the ballot and change the charter. Don't have to wait 10 years. You could do it next year if you wanted to make an amendment to the charter. We are a continuing charter commission, as council members are. We have the ability to review it and put it on the ballot. So it's not really about a Democrat or Republican. Again, this goes back to that previous question. Democrats aren't going to change the charter, so it looks like a bunch of Democrats or Republicans. This isn't jury-mandaring. This is the charter of the commission of the city. So as far as the items on here, I think they're all nice. If they pass, it'd be great. If they don't pass, it's not going to devastate the community. But there are tweaks, and they're good for the community, so.
Thank you. It's time for final thoughts. Candidates, if there's anything else that you would like to expand on or let the voters know, here's your opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis, and the whole Dove Audiovisual team. Ms. Hirsch, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And Superintendent Wood, thank you for allowing us to use the auditorium for this voter awareness forum. I do believe this is a very important election for our city and for the future of our city. And I do just want to let everyone know that, you know, I'm a lifelong resident of Talmadge. I love Talmadge. I just want to serve my community as a whole. And I promise to promote their wishes and then for the direction of the city. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for hosting us this evening. This has been tremendous. Uh, this has been tremendous. Uh, really just circling back, you know, I'm, I'm doing this for multiple reasons. One is I continue to try to want to grow and develop myself, uh, you know, constantly wanting to challenge myself. Uh, I wanna be, continue to be the voice of our community, uh, you know, in serving on council. Uh, you know, I, I look at my daughter, you know, she's five, she's started elementary school and kindergarten, you know, and that's the future. It's about future generations. So it's, it's about understanding, you know, what, what is our, our plan forward? Uh, you know, you look at our, our comprehensive plan right now, it's from 2017. Uh, you know, we need to dust that off immediately and make sure, uh, where we wanted to be five years ago is still where we wanna go and what, what's gonna position Talmadge for, for making our future generations whole, uh, you know, and it's also about controlling the pace of our community. So whether we're talking about commercial development or residential development, just making sure we, we take a step back and, and make sure that we understand we're doing, making the right decisions for the community, uh, and listening to community input, you know, making sure that we, we, we look at the future generations, we're not just looking at the tunnel vision of today. Uh, and last thing I wanna say is, you know, everyone gets their start somewhere. Uh, you know, I got my start, uh, you know, getting elected for, for 2020 and I wanna continue to grow and get experience on council and represent the community and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been an absolutely fantastic evening. Uh, so thank you to the schools for hosting Mia and, uh, to Dove, um, Media for putting on the, uh, event and, uh, webcast. So, um, first of all, I wanna be the voice for you. I wanna be the voice for the families of Talmadge. Um, and not only just families, but, uh, when I, uh, had the pleasure of working up at the Talmadge Rec Center, uh, I got to meet some absolutely fantastic, uh, seniors within our community and, um, we need to pull in some of that information that they possess and, and share that, uh, information with the other generations. I think that that's really important, uh, for us to do. Um, kind of, uh, focusing on police and fire, um, within, uh, as a, as a council member, I wanna focus on those two departments for sure, but I also wanna, uh, I don't wanna neglect our service department and our Parks and Rec Departments. Uh, those two departments, uh, by far, um, I absolutely feel that the Parks and Rec Department is probably one of the best in the state of Ohio. Um, we didn't get enough credit when we were, uh, when, when I was in there, but, uh, we certainly, uh, we, we held their own against other larger communities. Um, in our service department, they do an absolutely fantastic job. So I think we need to continue investing in them, uh, continue to make improvements. And, uh, you know, I wanna see those other improvements made throughout the city as well, uh, whether that's in our parks or whether the sidewalks, uh, or hike and bike type trails. So, so I ask for your vote come November.
I'm kinda uniquely qualified for this position. I've served obviously as a councilman for, this is my fifth year I'm city council. I have served as the president council, served as a mayor, served the charter commission, served in the, uh, still clerk or court system. I've worked in the Department Environmental Services. Um, so I'm uniquely qualified for, for this job. And I'm doing it because I like it. I love it. I love serving my community. I just, I just enjoy going to council and trying to make things better for people. I'm a big believer in quality of life issues. I think the hike and bike trail was phenomenal. The rec center we built was great, the, the community center, um, all these things we've done in our community are great, make it a great community. And that's why I believe in. I believe we keep working on this community, working together on this community and make this the best darn community. I always thought you, you treated Talmadge like you were trying to sell something. You know, you wanted people to want to come to Talmadge. There's two type of people in my book, those who live in Talmadge and those who wish they lived in Talmadge. And that's the way I like to keep working for my, my community and make that work.
So I would echo, uh, what Chris had said. Uh, you know, we've worked together for a long time, uh, he and I, uh, he, I and the mayor. Uh, and because of opportunities, uh, that I was given, the, the first one after a, a tough loss, uh, I, I was on the civil service commission because Chris asked me to serve there. And then that led, uh, to the school board, um, which at, at the time was a very, uh, critical role to play in our community. And that led to the, those buildings being built and that led to us being a, a magnet, um, destination community. And if you look at the local real estate transactions, uh, Talmadge residential real estate is crazy hot. People wanna be here. Pe- people like our community, they like the size of our community, they love our school district, they love the curriculum offerings, they love what we offer and, uh, and we're like a hand in a glove, our relationship, uh, with the city and the, and the school district. And when, when you say community in, in our town, uh, you really mean it. And, uh, and I've enjoyed serving in the past and, uh, and it gets in your blood, uh, like Chris said, and, and I hope to continue to serve in the future. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Please remember to vote on November 2nd or via absentee or early voting that is currently going on now. This concludes our forum.